Thank you everyone for coming to the meeting tonight. We have two possible additions to our meeting. One would be the zoning administrator budget. Jeff Bezuzi has some concerns. And I'd like to, if I could have a motion on that, to add that under old business.
I'll make a motion to add Jeff Bezuzi.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? And the next motion would be to accept the letter of resignation from John McKenna, and I would put that under new business. Is there a motion?
Make that a motion to add discussion of John McKenna's letter under new business.
You're second?
Second.
Is that the recreation committee or?
Yes.
Is there?
Recreation.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there any other agenda additions or deletions?
I was just gonna make a motion that perhaps we move, because we've got recreation committee members here, do we want to do that right after highway so that we, so they don't have to necessarily save for the whole meeting if they don't want to?
Sure, sounds good to me.
Is it just you?
I don't.
Matt and you?
I have to stay all meeting.
Well, I guess there's no, there's no need to reorganize.
Why not, right?
Okay, there's no need to reorganize. Okay, sorry.
Who seconded the letter of resignation?
I made it, I don't know who seconded it.
I thought it was Bob.
I seconded.
You did?
Yeah.
Or John, you mean?
Yes.
All right, if there's no other additions or deletions, I'd ask for a motion with regard to the regular meeting of June, or excuse me, January 27th. Motion to approve.
So moved.
You're second?
I looked them over, I thought they looked pretty good.
Any other comments? I didn't see anything.
For the record, I abstained, I wasn't present.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You got that right, Katie? All right, under highway, road commissioners' report.
Pretty much is ongoing with the roads and this weather we're having. Katie and I have been working with, getting some of the grants together, especially the paving grants. We're looking at, I think I'd pretty much take some pictures of a section of road we're looking at, getting a grant for if we're paving. And hopefully we can actually apply for that grant, send it out tomorrow.
Yeah.
We also, hopefully we're wrapped up on that FEMA project from the April 15th storm last year.
You think you're at the end of that?
I hope so. Every time we think we're at the end of it, he, Eric from FEMA comes back with something else, but...
That's to actually get the money, right?
To get the money.
That's to get the money, yeah.
Yes.
The, um, any update on the gorge road where that stands?
They've been in the process of...
Replacing.
Of the, um...
Culvert?
Not the culvert.
They're not at that yet?
I haven't heard nothing about that part.
Okay.
It's just that...
I wondered if they were there yet or not. Okay.
The last time I went down there, last week sometime, nothing was done with the culvert, but I see the stream which comes off the, where those three culverts come down, looks like a stone drift wrap, whatever you call it.
Right.
At least the upper part. And they also, where the road was washed away.
Right.
They stoned in that, did you check that out?
Yeah, they look like they gotta do some more work there to finish it up.
It just was a base.
That's where I was going with the rest of it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question.
The minutes of the last meeting, you talked about that culvert was $14,000.
$14,100.
And, and we're paying that?
Yes.
Yes.
That had, that had nothing to do with the, I'm sorry, go ahead. You can, that, yeah, as Mike...
Like Google, he knows everything.
Yeah. As Mike started, that had nothing to do with the actual washout from the airport itself. This culvert here actually comes out of the industrial park by the Vermont Country Store as an overflow culvert. And it's in a minute stream where it doesn't run all the time, it just handles overflow. And I had to get hold of Josh from Rivers and Management to get a permit for that. And he did the scope work on that, and that required even a little bit bigger culvert than it's there, a squash culvert. And what they're gonna do is actually remove a field of trees and reshape that bank and stuff so it has better feed into that culvert, so it's more efficient.
So I take it we're not gonna do it with our excavator?
Not that.
So then how big a culvert is that?
Uh, 36 is there, and they recommend a 42-inch squash culvert.
That just seems like a lot of money for a...
Well, yeah, but... But the thing is...
How many bids did we get on that?
We didn't get other bids on that. The thing is, we have lead in there, so there's a good chance that they'll have to bring a hammer in on an excavator. And it's beyond our capabilities of the town's excavator to do that project.
So is it Markowski is the only one that bid on it?
Yes.
Or is it him?
Yes, because he's the one that did the airport project and worked it in, and the road's still closed. And with that road being closed, we thought it'd be a good time to do that project.
I mean, what does a typical culvert cost you to change out?
I never did personally a squash culvert that size, so...
But what, I mean, a 24-inch?
Uh, you're looking at about $230 for a 15-inch, roughly.
And the excavator for a half a day or something?
Oh, no, it's gonna be quite an extensive project.
No, I know up there it will be, but typically.
What?
Typically for a 24, like when you did the creek road.
I think the, it was before cash came on, I think the last time we had, I wanna say Allard did some culverts for us.
Well, you did one on the creek road.
Did one on the creek road, by the farm, Norman Bones Farm.
Well, you did one down on the dirt road part.
Pardon me?
You did one right down there by my end.
Down by your place. But those are, those are 24-inch culverts.
Yeah, what, so what is it?
But those are regular culverts, they're not the heavy galvanized, those are the plastic culverts, just the round culvert. They're not the special squash culverts and bigger diameter.
Just say $14,000, I mean, you guys did a budget then, didn't you?
No, we're just gonna have to wing it out of my budget. The reason that we went in that direction was, given the fact that the road is closed, and given the fact that Markowski was repairing the road just up from there, and the state was paying for it, all this, that's when we decided that culvert was put in there, actually was the peers started it, and then Bert Austin...
I don't need the whole history of it, but Mike, I mean, geez, that's just a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but the thing is, they're gonna actually...
You can close off the road, apparently you can close the road off for a year, and not too many people, I haven't heard anybody complain about it.
Oh, I got a lot of calls. I got a lot of calls.
Well, you did.
Got a lot of complaints.
Hey.
The only good complaints I, the only good complaints I got were the neighbors, the people that live on that road, the residents.
Sure.
Cindy, did you have something?
No, I was one of the ones complaining.
Yeah. But because of the...
Everybody survived.
Because of the fact that, as was mentioned, they may have to bring in the big hammer and all this stuff to pound that out.
May have to do this, or may have to do that, and cost keeps rising.
What did it cost you to have all the work that you did up on East Timmer Road when they bought that hammer?
Oh, I'll have to go back and look at the figures, I can't pull it off off my head right now.
Was the culvert $14,000, or just the work, the whole?
No.
The whole project.
Whole project, $14,000.
Whole project.
That's, that's the bid?
No, that was the bid.
That's the bid.
That was the bid.
Done.
That was the one, single bid.
Yes. Yep. And normally we do go, you know that, from sitting in here.
I, I've seen two or three times you'd get multiple bids, but not much more than that.
Well...
Since I've sat on this board, we, this is one of the only times we have not gotten three bids.
Right.
And I will stand, I will sit here, and I've sat here now almost nine years.
Been a number of times that I've seen that people, that we haven't had bids.
I'm telling you that since I've sat here, there's maybe one or two...
When Dan did that culvert down there, was that bid out?
Nope. We, we did the work ourselves as a town, we hired Dan's excavator.
Yeah.
And with, okay, back up there, when we have had another project, I put bids out for another project for excavators, and Dan was the cheapest.
I'm not saying, you know, he's not gonna be the cheapest, I'm sure he would be. He'd probably do that one a lot cheaper than $14,000, but, you know, it is what it is, but...
The thing is, is to get these people to do it is another issue. It is a lot. And I haven't priced out that squash culvert, but I'll bet you that culvert's pushing... It was $3,000 or $4,000.
$3,000 or $4,000, just a culvert.
That's what he said it was. Because I went there with the engineer, what was his name, Jason?
Josh.
Josh, yeah. And they're also, it's not just the culvert itself and everything, there's ditching.
I know that very well.
Yeah. All right, anything else? More questions for the road commissioner? All right, warrants are up here.
I need those, actually.
And they're available, anybody wants to come up and look at them. Is there guests tonight? There, public comments, any public comments?
I just got an email from the, from the...
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna get down to that in a minute. Recreation Committee, rec field mowing. We have some circumstances now that, as it stands, two members have quit. We have two members that are sitting in here, I haven't heard from Roger Loomis, what, what he's doing. And as far as the mowing is concerned, I'm gonna ask the board, do you think that we want to take this on ourselves and get this done?
Well...
Can, can the, the committee that's still involved, the two members, possibly three members, be capable of continuing with the phase of the bids and stuff as a committee?
So what, what I would say, sitting here as one person, you have two members sitting here right now. They have to have a meeting, just like we would have to do. You would have to elect a new chair. And at that point, we can offer guidance like we were doing earlier in the process. And we've even said that we're willing to have the bid sheets available here at the town hall, and then you guys come back with a recommendation, and we approve who you want to do the mowing. That's the way that it operates.
You would, you would send out the bid for us, like with a paper or whatever?
What, what we had asked at that point was, we had asked for the rec committee to approve a bid sheet. To, 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 and, and we had, I think, a kind of sample draft that had been done, but we were looking for the committee to, to do their final stamp of approval on it, so to speak. And we had said that they could be made available here, they could be put on the website, however you wanna advertise it, get the word out, that's the easiest way, word of mouth to different companies is the easiest way. And we even said we would be willing to provide you with the list of people who bid on the cemeteries. So you can reach out even to those, which actually my understanding is at least two of them are willing to put bids in. So go from that type of process and go at it. Now, I don't know beyond the extent of organizing the mowing, and I know that the agreements were made up so that Little League and soccer and different things could take place, I don't know beyond that how much the rec committee was involved in those processes. I don't know how much John and others were involved in setting up the Little League type stuff. But my first thing would be, you know, we've got two members that have now dropped off, I think somebody's gotta pay Roger a visit. And then if the three of you are willing to kinda take up the mantle, I would say you gotta meet and elect a chair.
Are you posting the website vacancy?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
As it stands right now...
No problem, right, Rick?
Piece of cake.
As it stands right now...
Sounds like a volunteer.
I, you know, I have not heard back from Roger, I try to get in touch with him, so then...
I'm not chasing down people, but...
Huh?
I'm not chasing down people, I'll tell them when the meeting is, but that's it, I'm not chasing people down.
But, that's all, as far as I'm concerned, that's all you gotta do?
I'm not begging people to come on.
And let's face it, if the two of you, if the two of you show up, the two of you gotta quorum. I mean, that's the reality, if two of you show up, you've gotta quorum right now.
What if we tie?
Well, I guess you gotta come to a, I guess you gotta come to the select board to break your tie.
Bring a coin to play.
Alf is interested in it. Alf's interested.
Alf said wrestle.
I heard him say he wants to be on it, so...
He wants to do the mowing.
Recreational, you know, that's a, I don't know. All right, yeah, we'll, we'll look into it and see, we'll get back.
And I mean, some of the stuff had, you had provided at least some stuff to John and Tim, correct?
Yeah, so there's two interested contractors right now, but I didn't give out the bid sheet because it wasn't approved, and there's not a deadline set.
Can you send me that bid sheet, can you, that's the one that can email to me?
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
So I mean, basically it's approving it, and in my opinion, setting a deadline.
And then we can start giving it out.
Yeah.
All right, but what I would like is, when you guys schedule whoever, whether it's two E's or three E's, two things I'm asking you guys to do, because you're sitting right here, as was pointed out by Rob.
You gotta work before you go.
First thing is, if you notice a meeting, let Katie know when that meeting's gonna be so that we have some general idea that you are in fact meeting. Number two is, figure out how many people, now there was supposedly five members...
It's allowed up to seven, isn't it?
Yeah, it has to be an odd number, I don't know that it was...
It's an odd number to have on there.
Hmm?
If Kelly's got a town report in her desk, it might show what, how many there is.
But in that meeting, where the, the point I'm trying to make is, come up with a, if you only have two guys or three guys, however many shows up to that, then write up something so that we can put it on the website.
It could be seven.
That is, it's...
Okay, so...
Five's good.
So at least five.
Yeah.
It has to be the odd number, but, and then get, also get back to Katie so that we can get that on the website and start looking for people who are interested.
Talk to my brother-in-law. He might be interested.
You got one, two, three, four, five, you got five right there, you got seven actually.
You know, I just had, at the Grinch Hall, when we had the Grinch Hall meeting, and then everybody on the Grinch Hall boards, uh, on the...
You guys have that much fun?
You'd like to get a bid sheet, is that, that's what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so can we, can you guys, you got an idea of when you can meet, so you can at least set your bid sheet? Do you think you could?
Yeah, Rick?
Can you get it done by the end of next week?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll talk to you after the meeting, Rick, how's that sound?
I don't want you to talk to me.
And, and what I would say is, can we, I was gonna say, get your contact information, so as soon as it's ready, we can...
I have his phone.
Okay, so that we can...
I'm trying to chase it, so it's the first B here.
Okay, yeah.
Get it wrapped up here pretty quick.
And now you can see what we've been dealing with on our end.
But the, the fact...
We're gonna have a meeting this week, Rick, probably, I would imagine.
And then, uh...
Friday off.
If, if you do get together on that, then latest date would be to let us know what's going on by the following meeting this month, because it's still, the grass isn't growing yet, so we have a little time.
Can I get the key back from the, from the chair?
We'll have to, we'll have to do that.
Yeah.
I got my own building next door, so, I have a couple buildings next door, so, you know.
Well, I think, yeah, we're gonna have to work through all that, I would say.
Yeah.
I'll need a key here.
We can be ready with your stuff by the next meeting, two weeks.
Well, I mean, the big thing is, is, you know, people are looking to fill their schedules and fill their, their job list now, so it makes sense, we need to get this done, so...
I mean, if Rick's free Wednesday, I could probably do a meeting Wednesday night, quick meeting at Grinch Hall.
Actually have Bundy off, too.
You have Bundy off?
Yeah.
Well, and then, and check with Roger, too.
Or Wednesday, Wednesday night.
How should we get this thing done sooner, right, quick?
There you go.
Get this thing moving. Moving, and then we can worry about getting the rest of the board filled up afterward.
I mean, the big thing is to get the, in my mind...
People interested in the bid.
Exactly.
Just get this thing out and get this thing done.
My opinion is get the...
And drag it out any longer.
Correct. Get the mowing still.
As of tonight, we officially have two members, officially have two members who are quitting.
Oh, who would be quitting?
Right, we're gonna announce that tonight. So there's no reason why we can't, right, tomorrow, ask Katie to get over to Gloria's side and put that on the website that there's openings in the, uh, rec committee, please respond by X, Y, Z, whatever you think.
I think you reach out and ask some people, I don't think it's gonna be hard to track down another three people, or, you know, I don't think it's gonna be that hard to get people on.
Usually where you're most successful is if you have young parents who want to see a nice place for your kids, that's how we always did it in the past, I mean, that's just a suggestion, I'm not...
Or, well, you never know, you might even get somebody like Art Peterson or somebody, you know, that's got a history with rec, you know, that lives in town, that maybe somebody like that would even be interested in being a part.
Anyway, you know what we want.
Notice Mike said young kids, so that puts him out of it.
Get a Facebook page, it'd be a lot easier to post this stuff.
I'm an older kid.
I know, our Rutland, our VLCT doesn't want us doing that.
Can you do this?
No.
But Rutland Towns got one now?
Yeah, they post their renovation pictures in the town hall.
Almost every town has one, but...
Everybody, everybody has one now.
Well, we were advised, maybe we should go back and ask them, because we were advised, however many years ago, not to do it.
Little Town Springs, I love everybody.
Well, the way the statutes are written, they talk about a webpage.
Yeah, we're talking Facebook, though.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah. Little words now, that's probably why.
Katie, why don't you, do you mind throwing that on your list, too, just reach out to VLCT and what, see what they say about Facebook, maybe they've changed their tune. It was about six years ago they advised us, don't go there.
Yeah, that's what I've heard recently.
In a few minutes, I'm gonna read this letter that John, he has some suggestions in there, and maybe, you know, we can, it'll be on TV, we can draw up some interest that way, too.
But as soon as we have a bid sheet, we will get ahold of you. And it sounds like it'll be...
Very quick.
At the latest midweek next week, we'll have one, and we'll make sure that you've got it. Thank you for your interest, and for coming down tonight.
All right, moving right along, approve the marijuana ordinance. Now, Alf, you're probably interested in this, we thought we had this all out, and we thought it was posted in five different locations, we were under the understanding, even one question, yes, that has been done, but it wasn't done. So, according to Leagues, this is not legal. So we, we don't have to have the hearings like we did before, because we already had those. The board wants to certify once again that we wanna create this ordinance, and then we have to post it, put it in the newspaper, and post it in five different locations, and then it's 44 days for response, or 60 days deadline. So I'd ask for a motion...
Does that have to be unanimous?
Pardon?
They don't have to be unanimous board approval, does it?
Oh, that, it has to be majority of board.
Yeah, because at this point, it's just gotta, it's technically, it's, we've already been down this road once.
Right.
It's just, it's gotta be, and, and the language has not changed from what everybody after those hearings had agreed on.
You'd probably wanna read it tonight. But let me just, you talk about the league saying, because we didn't post it and all this stuff, it's not...
But the state also weighed in. Am I correct, Katie?
Who's state?
Yeah.
Um, I've only reached out to VLCT.
Okay. So there was an email that I had gotten, because I also asked, I should've brought it down, but I didn't. And the state also said that because the process was not done correctly, we have to, other than having hearings, we have to, um...
It's basically just, you're really approving the posting.
Right.
Because it's our, it's already been through the process.
Well, this, this email from Garrett Baxter?
Yes.
I guess he's the attorney at the league, Vermont League of Cities.
One of them, yes.
I mean, he's saying that, I mean, the whole process, you can't go through this now. You can't, he says municipalities cannot preemptively ban the sale of recreational marijuana for the simple reason that the Vermont Legislature has yet to confer any authority upon them to ban an activity, the sale of recreational marijuana, that is currently still illegal.
But there's medical marijuana, that's how this whole thing started, we didn't want dispensaries in our town.
Right.
Right? The next thing was, we had folks come down and said that sooner or later, they're gonna create a law that has pot shops essentially. But there's other communities in the state who have done this already, and we had...
Well, I know Newport, theirs was dealing with medical marijuana dispensary.
But we can also, the, the law is not enforceable if there is no law.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to go through this again.
But this is, this is an ordinance.
Yeah, but so...
In our town, this strictly says that we object, in case this does become law, we object to having the sale of marijuana in our community.
And that's fine, yeah, I think a lot of people object.
And that's, and that's why we're creating an ordinance.
But what I'm saying is, you're gonna have to go through it again.
I don't think so.
I think you will.
You will.
You're gonna have to.
I think you will.
So you can't do it?
You can't do it. He says the only exception would be respect to regulating miracle, miracle, medical marijuana dispensary, in accordance with...
Which email are you reading, Alf? Where's this from?
This is from Garrett Baxter.
Do you have a date on it?
Who's it to?
January 29th.
Because me and Mike made a phone call to them, questioning it.
Okay.
That's from the leagues.
That's from the leagues.
Yeah, it says the law, the matter provides that nothing in this subchapter shall be construed to prevent a municipality from prohibiting the establishment of a medical marijuana, or of a medical marijuana dispensary within their boundaries. And you can do that through either ordinance or the zoning that you do. But if you're, if you're gonna do something that the legislature doesn't allow you to do it now, then you're gonna have to do it again in the future, once they legalize it.
Well, and that was the general, that was the general consensus when we were going through this the first time around, was that we were, that we were gonna have to revisit it when something passed the legislature. That, that was my understanding.
And that's fine, I mean, you guys wanna do it, but, you know, you can, it doesn't hold anything.
No, I...
Standing to the ordinance at all. So it doesn't matter if you didn't post it in another place.
It's more of a statement.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a...
So why go through all the baloney about having it posted in the right place when the legislature doesn't allow you to do it anyways?
Okay, I'm reading what you're, you've got now.
Well, because we messed it up the first time, maybe.
VLCT is there.
And we've learned, but you messed up something that wasn't legal to begin with.
But that's from leagues, it's just a...
If a lawyer writes it in writing, it's a legal opinion.
Which town was it?
Perry has something, don't they?
Was it Richford that we mirrored this from?
Newport.
Newport.
And there was a medical, a mer, uh... And there was a medical, a medical marijuana.
Yeah, but there was a different account, there was a different town we got one from, two, there was like two or three.
You had one from out of Virginia, too.
Wasn't Bradford?
Yeah, but this one, this one was written by a state policeman.
It was a sheriff or something that wrote it.
I think since you've had the hearings, I think you should go ahead, I mean, you've already approved the ordinance. I think you should go ahead and post it.
I just don't think you need to jump through all the hoops.
Well, we've had the hearing and people wanted it.
We've spent a lot of time on this, and.
Well, if you don't post it, it's not an ordinance.
It's a waste. It's not an ordinance.
It is on the medical marijuana part of it.
There's nothing in there to do with medical marijuana.
We can go ahead and do this right now.
We're not gonna sell, we're not having dispensaries. For medical marijuana.
No!
No, we excluded, we excluded medical in it.
Everything.
In the end, it's just, this is just recreational.
Some sheriff lawyer are gonna commit.
Because that was what the public hearings came back, and that's why medical got excluded.
Right.
Well, I think since you had the hearings, I think, even though, it's like the gun sanctuary. No teeth in it, but it's like, the state knows, there are towns that are interested in.
That's not an ordinance, that was a non-binding, that was a non.
You know marijuana's sitting on the desk up there right now.
What'd you say?
You should smell it.
People selling marijuana in Claremont, I'm sure, somewhere. Right, now this picture, they can't do it now.
No, they can't, you just can't do it in a dispensary.
I mean, let me read this. "The ordinance shall become effective sixty days after the vote to adopt, that's what we failed to do this time. The adoption of the ordinance may be disapproved by a vote of a majority of qualified voters of the town voting at an annual or special meeting." That, in other words, after the sixty days, if we have people, or prior to the sixty days, if we have, well, it was a hundred and five people, I think, come in with a petition that say we want the town to vote on it, they have those sixty days to bring that in. "The full text of the ordinance is available for review to Town Clerk's office, but none of this was done. Section one, purpose, it is hereby declared that the recreational marijuana sales and operation of recreational marijuana dispensaries within the Town of Clareton, Vermont is affected with a public interest, and that the regulation of such dispensaries is necessary in the interest of the safety and convenience of the public. Section two, prohibited. Prohibition. The sales and/or dispensing of recreational marijuana and/or recreational marijuana products, including but not limited to solvents, edibles, and seedlings, within the established limits of the Town of Clareton are hereby prohibited, with the exception of marijuana specifically dispensed for medical purposes by a licensed marijuana dispensary as defined in Title eighteen of Vermont Statutes. Enforcement, any violation of this ordinance shall be civil matter which may be enforced in the Vermont Judicial Bureau, except as otherwise indicated. Violations enforced shall be in accordance with the provisions of twenty-four VSA subsection nineteen seventy-four and nineteen seventy-seven. For purposes of enforcement of this Judicial Bureau, the Rutland County Sheriff's Department shall be the designated enforcement agency." And viol- Goddamn phone.
It's not you.
Okay, good.
You're good.
Uh, violation of this ordinance shall be civil matter enforced in accordance with the provisions of twenty-four VSA seventy-four A and seventy-seven A. Uh, may be imposed for violations of this ordinance. And they have a waiver fee. Pursuant to, and in accordance with twenty-four VSA subsection nineteen seventy-four A and C, the Town of Clareton may make application to the Judicial Bureau to order a civil ordinance violation to cease. Uh, then it has, when it was going, uh, force. Um, and that's what we didn't do, we didn't do those things. Other than that, yes, march.
I've got a question, so we didn't hear from this lawyer while we were doing this, and why other towns in Vermont were doing this. They've just come up this twenty-ninth of January, okay? So, this was done before the twenty-ninth of January, before this opinion was rendered by this attorney.
Right.
So we got this in before this attorney came out from Leagues of City and Towns. So, it's somebody in this town that did not do the process right.
Correct.
But the people didn't come out with a petition in those amount of time.
No, no.
No, and nothing happened. So since this was all well-done before this opinion was rendered, I would say that you post it and put it in as an ordinance, you've gotta revisit it when they pass the law anyhow. And at that time, but you, you, you've been on Peg TV and you've told them, you're gonna do this ordinance, a lot of people in town think that ordinance is in effect right now for the slip of somebody in the town that didn't post it right. So I would, I would hope that the town would post it, make an ordinance, and, because it was all done before this, this opinion.
Uh, we had gotten other opinions, too.
From an attorney?
Ah.
Do you have those? Do you have those? On file?
Janet had them, we copied them, Janet had it. I don't know if I got them in my pile of stuff here, because I usually throw that stuff in here.
Let's see what I have. See what I've got in here.
Looks like the Secretary of State, he would tell you if it was a legal thing to do or not.
Well, there, it's, the issue with why Leagues is coming out and saying what they're saying is because, and credit goes to Katie, because she was doing her due diligence to find out if everything was in the right, and she's the one who made the discover, discovery that our office did not do the whole process. And we were trying to determine, okay, clearly we didn't do our full process, now where do we stand? And that's when they came back and said, you've held your hearings, but it never got posted, so it's gotta be posted to become, there's one more step before it can be.
Well, I think you, you need to understand, no matter what we do, it's not gonna be a, according to Garrett here, it's not gonna be a bona fide ordinance.
Correct, and.
Gonna have to do this again.
So where I go, where I go with that is, one, that was always my understanding from the beginning.
That's no problem.
Two, I think this is, for me, this is also a statement on local control. That's, that's, that's one of the things that, and, I mean, I made no secrets about the fact that I'm a strong proponent of local control as much as possible. And for me, that's where, I was never under the assumption that once this was in place, it was gonna be done, I mean, even when the committee that helped research and draft when Art was down here, he was the one that even sat here and said, listen, this is the best research we've come up with, this is what other towns have done, this is what even other states are doing, but as soon as the Legislature passes something, undoubtedly, you're gonna have to go back and address it and adjust whatever's put in place to meet whatever they do. Which, based on what I'm hearing, and what I'm hearing coming out of Mr. Burdett's office, it's on the docket for this legislative session, so.
But medical marijuana dispensaries are legal.
Medical.
Correct. Right.
And we excluded medical. We left medical alone.
Right, well, didn't exclude it, we, no, we understood that there was a purpose for medical marijuana. However, we didn't want the dispensaries in our town.
You excluded.
Excluded all medical.
Mm-hmm. Well, that wasn't the way I interpreted it, but I have my own way of.
I mean, there's, there's probably another element of this thing that's gonna have to get addressed again, but, no, all medical was excluded, dispensaries or sale.
Um, so personally, my personal opinion, there's a vote that stands from when it was approved back, whatever the date was. Which hopefully our records, Katie, are our records intact for that, when we approved it?
Yes, it's in a minute.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think the, the biggest thing is just like what's being said. All, all that's gonna be done is the posting and, which we put it, uh, there's five, there's the, I mean, the dump, there's, what, post office, there's here. The paper has to be one of them, right?
Right.
And then, I think, um.
Website.
The website.
Website.
Which, I know it was on the website, I know that part got it on.
When you, when you're saying that we excluded marijuana being sold in our.
Medical, medical.
Right. Sale and dispensing of recreational marijuana, this is, uh, that's all that's in here.
Yeah.
And there's a, there's some language in there that this excludes medical.
I don't believe, I don't believe so, because we had a quite a discussion regarding that when we'd done this, to keep them out of medical wear, because there are some people that use it to, that they claim it helps them with the.
Right. Pain.
So according to this, it was, I have an email from nine, Katie, I have an email from nine-ten that I just found in my email saying that it was posted at the post office, Loretta's, the town hall, the transfer station, and the website. So there's five.
I saw it at the post office myself.
But it wasn't in the news, that's, that's the big kicker.
One, one has to be the newspaper then.
It has, so by statute, it states the newspaper, then? So I mean, if it's been at those five places, do we throw it in the newspaper and call it a day?
It wasn't the transfer station, and it wasn't the post office, them two, I'm sure of, because I see it there.
I pay seventy-five dollars for a newspaper, not, it's gonna be more anyways.
And it's not worth nothing, the paper's written on.
Say it was posted.
Right now.
Just address it again if.
Unless it's a requirement by, to be in the newspaper, I don't see why.
Unless it says it has to be the newspaper, but according to this, it's been in five places.
Yeah, but it has to be in a newspaper.
Well.
Or doesn't?
No, it has to be in a newspaper.
The Select Board must arrange for one form publication of the full text of the adopted, amended, or repealed of the summary in a newspaper or general circulation in the town.
In general circulation of the town, so it's gotta be there.
Pay money for something that's not even gonna be effective, what's the point? To pay money?
It's gonna be eighty bucks.
Don't spend the eighty bucks just legally.
That's eighty bucks!
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to deal with it as soon as it gets, if it gets legalized.
So Sam's Good News qualifies as a public paper?
No.
The library.
General pub, how's it worded, general publication that goes to the.
Circulation is what she's saying, I think.
Circulation.
Summary of it in a newspaper of general circulation in the town, not more than fourteen days following its date of adoption.
Of the town.
So, but we're, but you're beyond fourteen days.
Fourteen days.
You're beyond the fourteen days.
Well, once you approve it tonight, then it's fourteen days.
I think that we should revote that. So it's, then we can put the vote in the, in the Rutland Herald.
For the places.
And then, no, it has to be five places other than the public herald, or public, uh, paper.
You're saying six places.
Herald in five places, which you've got the list of right there.
You didn't put the hearings in the Rutland Herald, that you'll have an hearing.
Oh, there was, uh, people down here that were reporters that did.
So that was put in the Herald, maybe not as an advertisement part.
Hold on, let me see what I can find out.
It was write-up in the Herald, regular write-up.
Yes.
Didn't put in.
Well, and it states a summary, right? Doesn't say it has to be the full ordinance, right?
Um, it has to just state where you can find the full ordinance.
Well, he put it.
It was in the Herald, then.
Yeah.
He did, we were a full write-up.
A couple times in there.
So it's done.
But the, the biggest one was after we did approve it. That's when, uh.
He did the big write-up.
There are like five, so these five specific things have to be mentioned. The name of the municipality, the.
Which was in there.
The website of the municipality, the title or subject of the ordinance or rule, the name, telephone number, and mailing address of a municipal official designated to answer questions and receive comments, and where the full text may be examined, and an explanation of citizens' rights to petition for a vote on the ordinance.
That was in there, 'cause I remember.
I'll buy your phone number, Mike.
Yes.
There was no phone number.
Phone number.
Everybody knows Mike's phone number. Not really.
Not his personal one.
No, I don't know it, I'm just kidding.
Cindy, you must have all known my phone number.
You know, we're, we're having enough.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until next meeting, and let's do a little more research before we pull any decision on this.
Second, is there any discussion around that motion?
Well, we almost wasted our time doing this to extend it out. All we're doing is reiterating what we done three months ago, four months ago, right now. You do it, and we all know, sitting right here, that it's not worth nothing. We're gonna have to go back and revisit it once the Legislature makes their move.
I tend to agree with Bob, I mean, what we've done is we've drafted something, as far as everybody's concerned, it's in place. And the press already picked up on it, and it was already all over the press. And considering that it ultimately doesn't have teeth, even if it is posted, based on, maybe that's the piece that I'd like to see a little more over the next two weeks, to see if there is any more teeth to it. But considering the Legislature's gonna do something about this over the course of the next six months, probably, and it's gonna have to be revisited anyway. I mean, personally, I don't see why I waste any more time on it.
All right, then, if, if, if a majority of Board feels, I know you have made a motion, but while we're having, it wasn't seconded.
Yes, it was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seconded, right, seconded.
Uh, we're having discussion, so if, in that discussion, we have, uh, come up with a hard, fast plan, if you wanna call it that, or a decision, that it's already been done the correct way. And the only thing that I would ask is if you could change your motion just to do some, uh, you know, we think it's established, so, but we want to confirm what the history.
Well, I did just confirm with the Treasurer that we never did pay for a posting.
Yeah, but.
But if it was in the paper.
It was in the paper, but a legal posting was never placed in the Herald.
It was in as a news item, I believe.
It was in as a news item.
The only, the only way you're gonna control this, if you want it controlled, is the zoning of having the zoning.
Well, that, and that's down the road.
Yeah, that's the only way you're gonna do it.
That's down the road.
That's the ways out, yeah.
Because that's not gonna be addressed until you get to the point of.
Of actually happening.
Of actually happening, so I, I mean, at my point, I'm just gonna amend my motion to state that I would wish to table this indefinitely.
Perfect, I second that.
Well, Rick's got a.
I'll second it.
He's got to do it. You're okay with that, Rick?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and there's been a motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I, I mean, I'd, I'd like to still do a little more research, but, and we can always then bring it back up, but. I think it's a moot point until the Legislature does something.
All right, let's move along. Um, whole business. Um, our zoning administrator had a question on him getting a pay raise.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we have Katie draft a letter on behalf of the Select Board stating to the zoning administrator that all town officials were given a cap of a three percent raise this year, and that his request for a raise is well beyond that percentage point and will not be granted this year.
Second.
All right, um, would that then suggest that he has a three percent raise?
Correct.
Okay.
He has a.
He has beyond.
He has a choice to make.
Have we done that percentage for everyone?
And his budget does, and it can even, if you wanna make it clear, his budget allows for a three percent raise.
All right, that's the way.
Sure.
Let's make that, you okay with that, Rick? Are you all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Got that, right, Katie?
Yep.
All right, new business. Uh, let's see, we have.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we forego the public reading of the letters of resignation this evening, make them available to the public, but accept both the resignations of Mr. Tim Mumford and Mr. Art Menard, further authorizing Katie Knop to, Katie Rock to reply with a thank you for their service from the Select Board.
Uh, you're gonna add.
And I'll add John McKenna also to that.
All right.
And I'll second. And I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? And, uh, these are all gonna be posted?
Made for, available to the public.
Right.
Through the administrative assistant.
Okay.
Um, do I need to post openings for these committees?
We'll get to that next.
So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Chairman, I would now make the motion that we go ahead and authorize the administrative assistant to reach out to the town clerk tomorrow to make these postings public on the website for a minimum of the coming fourteen days.
Or to the next meeting, right?
Yep.
They're seconding that motion?
They'll second that.
Seconded by Cash. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I was gonna read that, part of that, uh...
If you wanna read the, that last part, just...
Just John McKenna.
To con, conclude our discussion for...
See, the duties and responsibilities, this is from John McKenna. Um, the duties and responsibilities of Recreation Committee cannot be effectively fulfilled with the current makeup of the committee. In order to keep costs at most recently budgeted level, the committee needs five to eight very active members who are willing and able to put time and energy into building and maintaining the fields and activities. Most meetings in the last couple of years only had three members attending, and we had some meetings that were canceled or not scheduled because we couldn't get a quorum. Even without my other commitments, this situation was disheartening at best, and it made it seem pointless to even try to call a meeting. If additional members cannot be found who are willing, this is his suggestions, who are willing and able to be active in doing work to support recreation in Clarendon, then there basically is no recreation committee. In the absence of a truly active committee, I believe the select board has two main options. One would be to fund the recreation budget at such a level as to be able to hire, uh, someone to do work that needs to be done currently and implement any future improvements. The other option would be to limit recreation activities to what the select board is able to support without a committee. It's the suggestions. So...
So we got a big field, now we gotta hire somebody to manage it.
Well, let me, let me, let me, let me say why I believe what happened was. And I was going to announce that we are finally, we have gotten our permit from the state, after-the-fact permit, which, if you consider legal fees, engineer fees, and penalty fees, is upwards to twenty thousand dollars. The disgusting part of this whole thing was, that was done all for nothing, up to and including a thirty-three thousand dollar gift from Markowski's building their, the parking lot. The thing that bothers me the most is, and this is where I'm going with the recreation committee, they were all geared up to start work over there. They had moved the old backstops that were on the northeast section of the old field over to the new one. They were in the process of setting up, of making a, uh, two bench seats on either side for opposing teams. I think, Matt, didn't you get some lumber for that?
Yep.
All right? And, um, they had a couple people who were going to go down there with tractors and make an infield for the baseball. As soon as we had to put a hold on everything, because we thought we were gonna have to go down there and dig all that up and all this stuff, that shot everybody in the hip, so to speak, and said, "Why bother?" And that's what started this downhill, in my opinion. But I think that's what John is implicating as well, so... Now, I got a email from Jim Goss, who's our lawyer on this issue, uh, and also from the A and R representative, that we now have, and it's right here, if anybody wants to take a peek. We now have the after-the-fact permit. However, you have a thirty-day waiting period to see if anybody wants to comment on it negatively. So, the day...
How many people commented on the initial?
Well, wait, the, one. The A and R representative, Zapatic Courage.
Yeah, but nobody in the public, nobody in the public.
Nobody in the public, no. And so, the, the official timing is February seventh, 2020, when it's issued. The comment, you have an opportunity to comment until, um, three oh nine, 2020. So we're in that process. We, and then after that is when they'll give the final, the sig, the permit, after-the-fact permit. But can you imagine that? Twenty thousand dollars it cost this town for a gift.
For a free field.
For a free field activity.
Because somebody trespassed on our land.
And what was, and all it, all it ended up with is paperwork.
That's right.
All it ended up with, all it was?
Yep. But, let me tell you this. A, uh, A and R collected an eighty thousand dollar fee from...
V-Trans.
V-Trans.
So the state money out of the left, they put it in the right, so...
Right, right. All because of this one individual, Zapatic Courage, I'm saying it again. So anybody watching this in your neighborhood towns, when you hear this name...
Run.
Run. And I'm not gonna go any further with it, because...
Well, the same thing happened, but the...
The hair's already standing.
It, it's going on right now.
Yeah.
Same people.
Solid waste district.
Yeah.
Encroached about two feet onto a, a ditch in the town road that is considered a wetland.
But now, there's another thing you have to think about. People from most of Brandon North, along the Otter Creek, this same individual is running that process to, well, we just want to expand from fifty foot to a hundred foot, the way I understand it, the protective area around the Otter Creek. Anybody that has lived anywhere near the Otter Creek knows that, you know, depending on how much water's flowing down it. But these farmers up there, they come to find out that if they use that as a hayfield or anything like this, they can't put any kind of pesticides or anything, they can't, uh, so the state is telling them it goes from fifty to a hundred foot safety area.
Setbacks.
And, but you're still gonna pay taxes on it. But you can't use your property, come on.
Does that come into effect now?
No, they're trying to get it into...
No, we're already, I believe it's twenty, twenty-five feet from the creek, any major bo, body of water. I think field ditches are like ten fif, ten feet or fifteen feet.
Same thing with Mill River.
Yes.
What happens with the erosion every year that, that keeps knocking away some of that, that? Is that gonna keep expanding until you own nothing?
Yep, that's what they want.
That's where we're headed.
That's the state for you.
No. That's the politicians that are sitting in office someplace, from Burlington, I don't wanna point to this.
Should we take a pause if our deputy has something for us?
If the brook jumps its boundary and goes through the hayfield, you lose the hayfield, 'cause you can't put the brook back where it was.
Do you have anything, sir, you wanna?
Nope, just stopping in. Thank you for being in town tonight.
On that, I've been to a, I've been to a couple of select board issues in a different town, southern here, and they have a sheriff there because of this.
No way.
Fortunately, I don't, we don't have that problem.
Be happy we don't, be happy we don't have that here.
We don't need the sheriff.
He's got dog problems.
Yeah, that's right. And, uh, I do see that, uh, those folks have a crib that they bought.
They had it up by the following Monday.
That's good. And, uh, the, the, um, town clerk tells me that they had registered their animals, got shots for them and all this other stuff. That's good. Good follow. Good work. Moving right along.
Moving right along.
Discuss and approve the RRPC Rutland Region Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make short order of this. Will I make a motion that the town of Clarendon not adopt the Rutland Region Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the "not" part of it?
What is it?
Basically, if we sign on, there's a lot of different things, and they try to tell you that it does not mandate that we would have to provide our equipment, but we would have to provide to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission a list of all of our town equipment, all of our fire apparatus, all of our ev, everything. And if there was a major disaster, they could potentially pull our items to go work someplace else in the state, which...
They would make that determination?
It's, it's worded in such a way that, let's put it this way, from reading it from my perspective, I would be uncomfortable signing on to it.
Yes.
Sounds like a strange one.
They, it says in there that they could not mandate that, but it very much is worded in gray language that... I mean, let's face it, and we had this discussion last time this came up, 'cause it's come up at least twice since I've been here. We've all said, if a neighboring town had a disaster and we needed to reach out and help them out with our equipment, with whatever, we said we absolutely would be a town... We have other towns that help us with grading if our grader's down. I mean, we, we help each other out. And I think that's part of the Vermont spirit, and that's a part of who we are.
Yep.
But I don't need to sign on to a document that could have lowboys pulling in and loading up all our town trucks and taking them up some place near the Canadian border to work on a town up there. That's, I mean, that's just, to me, that's ludicrous.
And I think one, one of the scary things about this, to me, is just the beginning.
Well, and that's the thing.
They're gonna rewrite this thing once they get the towns on.
And trust me, I can see it now. I will be criticized for saying that I blew that out of proportion by what I just said, but the reality is, I think this is stepping stones. This is, this is small pieces, and you sign on to something, and it's like the required agricultural practices. It used to be recommended agricultural practices, now they're required. All you gotta do is change a few words down the road, and all of a sudden, you're signed on to something that you never signed on to begin with. So, my motion stands.
Is there any other opinions? And I think for the record, when we vote, we all wanna, in a chorus, like we're singing something. So there's been some...
Do we need to have a letter sent back to them for that?
I don't believe so.
I don't think they're responsible.
We'll ask Katie just to notify them that the town doesn't agree. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Sounded good. Anyone opposed? All right. Set the CMV policy workshop, time and date.
CMV. Commercial motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Oh, this is for the, um, weight permits?
Yeah. Um, it's the federal commercial motor vehicle policy.
With the drug testing and all that stuff?
Yeah.
And they changed that, too.
Well, it's an updated version, which, um, I look back, and the last one we had was from 2014, and you adopted it, but the guidances were not...
Filled in?
Yeah, you just left them. So that's where we need to fill it in. So I thought, me and Heidi discussed, it might be easier to have a workshop on this rather than trying to decide it all in a select board meeting.
What is the timeframe for getting?
Um, well, Wade, our loss control agent, wanted it adopted like, like, start of the new year, so I could get working on the rest of the...
What's everybody think about five o'clock before the next select board meeting?
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't believe it's gonna take any more than an hour.
No, we just need to decide on some stuff and write it up.
'Cause basically, we're just stating who pays for, like, there's...
Well, no...
It was those sections that...
Were in bold.
In bold, right?
Right.
Well, that and it, they transmitted into, say, handwritten stuff into more electronic stuff.
Oh, yeah. It, it's also ultimately what we decide is probably gonna have to be transferred to the employee, um...
They have to sign on the file.
Personnel policy.
Yeah.
In the long run. That's probably gonna require us to change a few policies.
Um, yeah, well, right now, we, we need driver qualification files, like that is required, and we don't have those. But we need to pass the policy before I can do that.
Okay.
All right, so there's been a motion made, uh, for five o'clock before our next meeting. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
And Cash seconded it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
What's it been on, at the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, right, or... Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, oh, okay.
All right, uh, do you have any? We're doing town officers' report. Katie, do you have any?
Um, I just, um, got, um, Robert Sabaski is on the Regional Ambulance Service Board of Directors, and he is not gonna be reappointed, and it's a three-year term, so just keep it in mind, someone you wanna fill that position.
In March. Okay, but we can post that, too? That we are looking for someone to volunteer for that?
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we have Katie have that also posted. We're gonna have a lot of postings up there.
For change.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Don't hear anything. Matt, as safety, do you have anything you wanna?
Fire truck's, uh, built, being built right now. It's, uh, body's, the body's all welded. The cabin chassis's been painted. The engine was put in last week.
Where are the pictures?
On Facebook, where everything else is.
Sorry you asked that, aren't you?
Could update some more pictures today, but I, I just got the engine pictures today and stuff, so...
Good, anything else, uh, far as the, uh...
I've got an emergency management meeting at Rutland Planning Commission on Thursday at three o'clock.
Yeah, they sent some emails out. Uh, to Grange Hall, anything going on up there?
Grange Hall, we're having a meeting on Saturday. Somebody wants to come, seven-thirty in the morning, bright and early. Bring on up somebody.
Is that your job, Marge? Is that what they put you in?
Providing breakfast and...
That's Alf.
Gloria does that, that's good.
Alf does it.
Alf does that? Breakfast?
Where's the Marge, we're bringing, we're bringing some munchkins.
Munchkins?
All right, Bob, do you have any concerns?
Here's the buildings.
No, just, uh, two things, really. One, a statement, uh, last Wednesday night, we had a solid waste meeting, did not have a quorum, so you know where that went.
Yeah.
And the second thing, and I should've asked Katie, I can ask Cash. Last meeting, there was, uh, a question on what was gonna be done with the covered bridge. Did you get that straightened out, that it would be restoration once there?
Katie can, she reached out.
It's definitely gonna be a covered bridge.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Cash, do you have anything?
On my behalf of the passing of my father, I wanna thank everybody in the town and surrounding areas for all the cards, cards and kindness and calls we received, um, and also the bouquet of flowers that, that come from the town. Appreciate it very much.
Uh, I would like to make everybody aware that we had a thank you card from the Ruane family, and right here, so we can put that on the, sad, with sad news. Uh, we also, a former rec committee individual, Roxanne Phelps, had passed away, and I think her, uh, up at Aldo's funeral home tomorrow afternoon, right? I think that's when it is.
Is it tomorrow, or is it Tuesday?
Uh, Tu, yeah, that's...
I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Tuesday and Wednesday, I believe.
Oh, really? Okay.
But it was in the paper.
Calling hours. Wednesday is a, um, service, I believe, in West Rutland.
So Tuesday from three to six or something.
Three to six or three to seven, something like that. Health officer and dog catcher for a while.
Yep.
Yeah, that's right.
They did a darn good job at both of them.
As well as the rec committee, she did a lot of work.
Yeah.
Um, little leaks and stuff. Do you have anything, Rob?
I think I spoke my mind enough tonight.
Maybe.
I'm good.
Uh, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Anyone opposed?
You got me, Robert.